You can't help what you're.
I know, like where is? John, I saw you. Oh, but you're right there. I'm gonna move over a little to that camera. Stirring right at my, my stomach there. No, it's them two. So is your, is this tipping board on you? Mine's tipping forward, I don't know. I feel like I'm just gonna slide off. And that camera, I was like, I'm not gonna sit there.
Slide down, pull you back up this way or go that way.
Okay, whenever you're ready, I think everyone else is ready.
Good evening. Good evening, and we'd like to welcome to the John and Porter meeting. On the first item we're gonna take care of would be a hearing on lease agreement and additional appropriation. And that's Steve, you're gonna handle it?
Yeah. We're actually holding our lease agreement and our additional appropriation hearing at the same time. They run together. But I'll, I'll read what each of these forms that the board will approve this evening deals with. The school corporation is funding this project through a lease financing. That is, as is done with other past construction renovation projects. Lease financing are used by school corporations across the state of Indiana in order to borrow for renovation and construction. The building corporation will purchase a portion of Seymour High School building at the closing of the lease, the lease if fragile data. Building corporation will then lease the building, or lease that building, a portion of the building back to the school corporation. The lease rental due from the school corporation will be paid from property taxes and will be for the lease building during the term of the lease. The lease rental, as shown in the maximum lease agreement that we will approve this evening, will be sufficient to pay the principal and interest due to the bondholders. During this open, open meeting, we will hear from the public, or the public will hear from us. The lease rental contained in the lease agreement is fair and reasonable for the construction improvements being made. The first item that they will prove will be the additional appropriation, which as I said runs concurrently with that here. The school corporation will receive money from the sale of the real estate to the building corporation. Since this money was not initially listed in the school corporation's annual budget, the school corporation is required to hold a hearing for the additional appropriation of those funds. Also, there'll be a resolution authorizing execution of a lease agreement, which at the end of this hearing, the board will vote on all these items together. As required by the school leasing statute, Indiana code 20-47-3, after hearing, the school board must approve the lease and authorize the officers to execute such agreement. This lease is the agreement where the school corporation will levy the required property tax to pay the lease payments. The lease payments will be paid to the building corporation and used to pay the bondholders. Without the lease, bondholders would have no assurance that the building corporation will repay the bonds. The lease is the mechanism by which the property tax collections get to the bondholders. The additional appropriation resolution, which is exhibit D, after the additional appropriation hearing, the school board will adopt a resolution which outlines the appropriation of the funds received for the sale of the real estate. The resolution also specifies that the funds will be placed in the school corporation's construction account separate from all other school corporation funds until the project is complete. Also, a resolution assigning construction bids and contracts to the building corporation once received, which is known as exhibit C. The building corporation will own the Seymour High School building. The building corporation will also be the issuer of the bonds. The bond proceeds will be held by the trustee bank and will be used to pay the contractors for the work done on the building. As a result, the construction bids and the contracts will need to be with the building corporation because the building corporation will hold the money to pay the contracts. The school corporation receives the bids and/or contracts and awards the bids and/or contracts under state law, but then assigns those bids and contracts to the building corporation. Resolution approving master continuing disclosure undertaking and issuing bonds, exhibit D. That's a lot to say at one time. The Securities and Exchange Commission require that the school corporation enter a master continuing disclosure undertaking before it issues bonds. The agreement requires that the school corporation agrees to timely provide certain financial information to the SEC Emma, which is what it's called, database, and provide notice of any material events. Resolution approving amended and restated post issuance compliance procedures, exhibit C or E. The school corporation itself shall consider and approve amended and restated post issuance compliance procedures because we're adding to the existing one, so we have to restate or restate. The last one, resolution approving issuance of bond anticipated notes, exhibit F. The board will approve the issuance of a bond anticipated note in one or more series. And what that basically covers is that it gives the school corporation the option to sell bonds in one time or to split it up over two issues. And if it's two issues, it would have two amortization tables, two payback times, they'd all be together, but there'd be two of everything. Any questions on anything that I read that, though that was a lot? And then for every one of these, after the board approves this, there'll be signatures required by the president and the secretary. So I have about fourteen forms to sign this evening. Any questions? None, I'm ready for a vote and to end this hearing.
Do we have a motion? Any discussion? Okay, if there's no discussion, we'll vote. All who's in favor, aye.
Aye.
All who's opposed, the same. Motion carries. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Now we'll begin the regular board meeting. Pledge allegiance and remain silent. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, just as for all. This time, I'd like everyone to repeat the vocation statement.
Showing to excellence, everyone, every day.
Thank you. Moving on, consideration of modifications to the agenda and approval, Mr. Har.
I recommend you to do the as presented.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote. All who's in favor, aye.
Aye.
All who's opposed, the same. Motion carries. Moving to the consent agenda. You had your board minutes for June the eighth. Any questions on your board minutes? Okay, Steve, I'll let you run through your reports here.
Thank you. Uh, the first item is our monthly bank recon, and I'm excited to say that our balances are all back up because we received our property tax, excise tax, those local taxes. Uh, and even more exciting is we collected more than fifty percent of our property tax, which tells me that people are paying their property taxes. Not that I would say they weren't, but it's a, it's a, you know, when you get over fifty-five percent, that's a good indicator that things are good in your county. So, uh, to me, that's an exciting thing to look at that. Then moving on to the monthly claims. Uh, June had actually three payrolls, and again, I'm excited to talk about that because on, uh, June twenty-fifth, the school corporation was able to give everyone a step for the twenty-twenty-one school year. So, um, everyone worked really hard this past year, and it was nice that we were being able to do that. So I think all of the employees, um, were very appreciative. So that, that was a good thing. Other than that, everything else was pretty much a normal, um, month. We did pay our debt, so, um, that particular run on June eighteenth is higher than normal because we paid all of our debt, we do our six-month payments. Then moving on to our fund report. You can see that in most cases, most of the, uh, funds picked up. So like I said, we, uh, especially in operations, we are back where we would like to be, and then it starts down, so it's a six-month cycle. Then looking at the appropriation report, we ended at fifty point one-two percent of our budget, understanding that there are some expenses that happen in January, like our HSA deposits that are one-time expenses. So, you know, if we can be right around fifty percent, that's good, um, good indicator. And then if you look at, um, projected balances and such, um, if our enrollment stays stable and the new funding formula, um, works as it's supposed to, we will actually be back at the end of this year to our twenty-five percent operating balance. Even though last year was a tough year because we didn't grow, we didn't really get any new money, but we should make it up in the second half of this year. So, um, it was a good month. June ended good, so I was excited about that. Any questions on any of that?
Questions, okay, we'll move on. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
I'm gonna run through the personnel of the board here quickly. We have two retirements, Missy Lake High School, Pat Martin High School. Resignations, Jim Perry, Title I instructional assistant Brown, Jennifer Stewart, special ed instructional pre-K Jackson, Caitlin Flood, science teacher, middle school, Brittany Mills, speech language pathologist for the corporation, Jennifer Snow, special ed education teacher, middle school, Leslie Gerger, math teacher, middle school, Rachel Kane, head United track and field coach at the high school, Jerseh Hudson, kitchen manager, Jackson, Marcy Isaacs, part-time evening custodian, Portland, Joanne Mackey, head volleyball coach at the middle school, Kenner McDaniel, Title I instructional assistant at Brown, Noah Greenley, uh, special ed instructional assistant at high school, Sabrina Nicholson, assistant softball coach at the high school, Jamie Brown, biology teacher at the high school, Susan Walter, speech language pathologist at Redding, Laura Walter, Title I instructional assistant at Redding, and Shelby Portre, EL instructional assistant at the sixth grade center. Appointments, Angie Winneke, assistant principal at Jackson, Monica Osteen, assistant principal, sixth grade center, Joseph Lawler, elementary teacher, first grade, Jackson, Shannon Palmer, language art, art teacher, sixth grade center, Erin Brown, science teacher at middle school, Caitlin White, special education teacher, middle school, Kelly Tracy, speech language pathologist at middle school in Emerson, Lisa Gilbert, long-term art substitute, Seymour High School, Amanda Wilson, elementary teacher, fifth grade, Brown, Lauren Moore, special instructional assistant, Emerson, Shelby Stahl, kindergarten instructional assistant, Brown, Chris Walz, special ed instructional assistant, Brown, Tim Trenty, bus driver, transportation, Sharon Allman. All these next people are part-time cooks, Sharon Allman at Brown, Rebecca Gamble at Jackson, Kathy Leonard at middle school, Lisa Rutan, Emerson, Ever Young, Brown, Eda Root, middle school, Linda Cooley at Seymour High School, Heather Rondelegan, EL instructional assistant at high school, Becky Gerling, title three to two hurts, and Amberus, Lindsay Peters, junior class sponsor at the high school, Alex Silver, junior class assistant sponsor at the high school, Oracatro, here, here will sponsor at the high school, Mercedes Smith, girls head cross country coach at the middle school, Dustin Gosson, assistant football coach at the middle school, Maggie Royalty, assistant girls track coach, middle school, and Erin Browning, assistant boys track coach at the middle school. Appointments pending approval of Indiana teaching license. Jackie Hare, special education, Seymour High School, Claudine Kitty, Seymour language arts teacher at middle school, Stacy Williams, part-time English teacher at Seymour High School. Transfers, Carol McIntosh, administrative assistant, sixth grade center to Al Ten, Susan Walter, administrative assistant, middle school to the sixth grade center, Melanie Russell, social studies, special ed teacher at the high school, Kathy Phoenix, librarian, the Title I instructional assistant at Redding, Hannah Krotowski, kindergarten one A to librarian at Redding, Chris Wilson, Title I to kindergarten instructional assistant, Redding, Christine Hoffman, part-time to full-time English teacher at high school, Sarah Bane, part-time to full-time science teacher at high school, Anne Dormall, part-time to full-time math teacher at the high school, Don Mahoney, assistant manager to kitchen manager, Jackson, Rita Cole, cook to assistant manager, Jackson, Ashley Sirding, part-time to full-time special ed instructional assistant, middle school, sixth grade center, Susan Conrad, part-time to full-time special ed instructional assistant at the high school, Alyssa Winget, part-time to full-time cook, Jackson, Alita Mahbass, Tammy Marksberry, administrative assistant, special ed, Sandy Reed, head custodian, administration guy, Sandy Cable, custodian at Brown, Lisa Rudolph, food service at sixth grade center. Also, permission to post hire, transfer period to August tenth, two thousand and one. And we have a list of jobs there. Uh, this will be posted on the website and also in each bill. Any questions on that? Okay, if we have no questions, I'd like to have a motion to, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Seymour High School, boys and girls tennis out of straight, out of state. That's just Sharon Wood, isn't it? Is that right, Greg? Tennis chair? She's not coaching more? I can't hear you.
I can't, I can't tell the name.
So Sharon's not coaching tennis? Coaching the girls, okay. So I guess she wants to take them to a tournament over there, so. Okay, this time, I'd like to have a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'd like a second.
Second.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote. All who's in favor, aye.
Aye.
All who's opposed, the same. Motion carries. Moving on.
Sorry to interrupt, uh, Ms. Brown, just a couple introductions if you'd like to.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to introduce two excellent additions to our Seymour Community Schools administrative team. First of all, joining us at Jackson Elementary is our assistant principal, uh, Ms. Angie Winneke. She's coming home. Uh, she spent time, her first, uh, job, her first, um, educational job was here at Jackson Elementary, Jackson, the old Jackson. Now she's coming back after twenty years of Mark Vallee County School Corporation, and she's gonna be joining us at Jackson Elementary. So please welcome Ms. Angie Winneke. And Lori and West was unable to be here tonight, so I'd like to introduce our new assistant principal, also coming from Mark Vallee County School Corporation, Ms. Monica Nodkastak.
Go ahead and have both of you.
Thank you, all, thank you. So, so excited, so glad to be there.
Okay, now let's move to superintendent's communication. Childcare Network.
Mr. Durkens, each August, we, uh, we bring to you the MOU with Childcare Network. We've asked Meg to come today just to do a quick review of services they offer to answer any questions.
Hi, thank you for having me tonight. Uh, our two goals at Childcare Network is to prepare students for kindergarten and then try to engage caregivers to, um, be involved in their child's education. A little bit about our program, we accept children aged four by August first. We have five locations now, four in Seymour and one in Brownstown. We are Monday through Friday, eight-thirty to two forty-five. We accept private pay as well as students on the on my way pre-K urgent. And, uh, we intend on starting August ninth this year. Do you have any questions about our program or any site specifically?
I think it's a great program. You talk to the kindergarten teachers here in our system, and, uh, the kids are so much ahead if they've got some preschool training, so I want to thank you for doing that.
That's great to hear, thank you for having us.
Yeah, they're very, they're very excited when they get in and they can find out that the student has some, some instruction in foster kindergarten.
Yeah, and it helps the student too, that transition from preschool to kindergarten. Not only being in the building physically, they see some familiar faces and things like that too.
How many, how many students did you have that last year, do you, if you remember?
Last year was, because of COVID, our numbers were low. Um, but usually we have around seventy students. We're adding Portland, so we're anticipating a few more.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Lisa Alten.
Yes, we just wanted to give a quick, uh, update on where we are. Since the last meeting, we approved the handbook, we are now fully staffed, K through twelve. This is a building year for us. We have, uh, had one enrollment window, and we will open another one soon, but we took four school starts so that students that are currently Seymour Community Schools students have the opportunity to indicate that they would like to participate in, uh, the virtual program. The team that we have assembled, uh, they had training on June twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three with the educational platform that we use, Edunity. Our lead teacher from this point forward, Kathy Beers, will occasionally come and give you all an update on enrollments and how it's going and what we're doing. So, uh, we're well on our way, Kathy and I, I'm focusing on K through eight, K's nine through twelve, and we have been engaging with them throughout this time. So we're, um, very optimistic about getting on to a great start. And I would say that, uh, join us at the Jackson County Fair, we'll have a booth out there this year. Don't want to miss out on that, I'm excited we have a fair, so.
District, district curriculum, Mr. Har.
Yes, a couple weeks ago, Attorney General Todd Winkito released a document called the Parent Bill of Rights. Uh, a lot of the document had to do with what curriculum is being taught at school. Uh, that being said, I want to take the opportunity to say that Seymour teaches the state-approved standards, and our curriculum is available for your review on our website. And how you access that is go to our website, Seymour Schools website, uh, click on the services link. click on the Services link, third choice down is Curriculum, and you click on that, and it will take you to our curriculum page with all kinds of clickable links and resources there. Thank you to Mrs. Ferguson for preparing that and keeping it available and transparent. As always, if anybody has any questions about curriculum, Starfield Building Principal, reach out there or one of us, and we'll be happy to help out with that. All of our curriculum is available online for review. Any questions?
Okay. Lisa in the audience. Okay, moving on. Donations and Grants. And the first one is Safe Haven Grant. Katie Leitzman.
Hi, I'm Katie Leitzman. I'm our Assistant Director of Federal Programs. The Safe Haven Grant proposal was approved, and the corporation was awarded $78,500. These funds will pay for the salary and benefits of our PBIS specialists who supports all five of our elementary schools. The education fund match is already in place through our PBIS Title I Instructional Assistance. So we have that taken care of. So I'm just here to ask your permission to accept the 2021 Safe Haven Grant, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about that.
I make a motion to approve the grant.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, if there's no discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Barbie Special Education Grants.
Good evening. It's that type of year to ask for permission to apply for the special education grants. This year's grants will be used to help offset the costs of providing services to our students through professional development, staff salaries, supplies. And due this year, we're looking to help support teachers engaging special education licensure. Also, we know a proportionate share goes to service students and funds programming in our non-public schools. They have not, for the first time since I've been doing this, released the amounts just yet, but they're due here in a couple of weeks. If we go by last year, we had about a little over $36,000 in preschool and a little over $1.2 million in our big grant. So just asking for permission to apply for both of those, and then that will be brought back to you with the amounts for final approval.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion, go by.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion passed, thank you. Okay. Diane, Boys and Girls Club.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to revisit the MOU with Boys and Girls Club. They will be applying again for the 21st Century Learning Grant. Our partnership will provide information regarding our students so they can help them academically, some parent involvement and advisory council participation. There's not really a financial cost to Seymour Community Schools outside of the million hours that will help support the partnership to provide that before and after-school support for our students. So just like your permission to enter into this MOU with the Boys and Girls Club, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
How many, I don't know if it's Jeff or Diane to answer this question. How many students would you say are involved with the program?
Right now, I would say that that is still yet to be determined. There's not an existing 21st Century program. If they get the grant, they will start developing that and enrolling students in that program.
Is there a max number? Is our target number?
Pardon me?
Is there a target number or a max?
Jeff, do you know what that target number is? I'm thinking they're really going to start with their Boys and Girls Club attendees now.
Yeah, the members.
And they try to recruit more students. So I think that they have potential to make it as, potentially as big as the number of students that want it to be.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think there's, I don't think there's a determined ceiling at this point.
All right. Good.
Okay. More discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Construction Projects, DPS Architecture, Steve.
Yeah, at your seat, I'll lay a breakdown of our monthly construction bills that we're asking for approval on. Of course, they're all contracts that you've approved, but we bring them to you each month to show you what we're going to pay. And you can see invoice nine for all three of the projects is listed there. And then our first bill from Skilman Corp. is listed. And I actually attached copies of those bills. And on the very last page is the bid award schedule for the five sets of the project. Any questions on any of that?
No motion to approve these bills?
No move.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Mr. Harv, Educational Facility and Corporate Waste.
I'll just introduce your update, the building project first.
The building project first.
Could be, hold on a minute. Oh, I'm sorry, tell me. That was different. Okay, go ahead.
That's okay. Yeah, I just want to give you a little bit of an update on the three main facilities that we've been working with over the last month or so, starting with the Sixth Grade Center Wheel, a construction phasing meeting with, with the Skilman Corporation and the administration of Mrs. Westall on the 7th. Some major highlights, like Mr. Nauman just shared. We have the, the bid schedule that's coming out. We also have a phasing plan that will kind of let us know where they're going to be doing work and what parts of the building are going to be off limits for construction and what parts are going to be strictly for education. And then as that progresses through that, that process, how we're going to move classrooms and programs around in that building so that we can continue educating while, while construction goes on. There are a few things that, that we needed to take a look at on the front end. For example, a modified drop-off and pickup procedure because a large portion of that part of the property is going to be a part of the construction. And so we needed to modify that. So Mr. Sharpe and myself met with some folks from the city and then just our own people on making some adjustments. We're going to have to put down some gravel and things like that to be able to move cars through what is now currently grass and things like that. Also establishing a fence barrier on that southwest edge of the property and then along the south edge of the property just to kind of be able to help contain our students and create a separate barrier between them and, and the local properties. So that project is, is moving along really quickly. Moving on to the high school, the drainage project is nearing completion. In fact, the, the work that they did has already started to function because we've had so much rain in the last couple of weeks. Those pumps are, are working properly. This is what we had planned. Moving water and such, haven't had any flooding, knock on wood. And so there's really only a few things left. They started today milling the surface in the teacher parking lot down on the west side of the school. They're going to pave and strike that very, very soon. And then they're still waiting on one backflow valve. They've set the installation that that piece is going to be in, but it's essentially the backflow preventer that will keep the city's stormwater system from coming onto our system. Once that's done, then hopefully, that was, that piece was set to make it through customs, interestingly enough, and be installed or delivered sometime this week or early next week with a substantial completion by July the 19th. So hopefully, that project will be completely done behind this and moving on. And then the last piece is about the Ag Science Center. The, the welli booths that we approved back in early fall, or early spring have been completed. They are up and ready, all the equipment set in place. So we're preparing for the students when they, they arrive in early August. And then also, according to the phasing schedule that we worked with Skilman Corporation, the, the lion's share of that work is not set to begin until February or March of '22. Most of that has to do with steel procurement, and it's really a challenge to procure steel. So if we can get it earlier, we may be able to begin earlier. Any questions on those, those three items or those three construction pieces? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harv, Corporate Waste.
Yeah, I'd say we're about 80 to 85% complete with the building. It's now going to be known as Seymour Central Service Center. And we have a couple signs over there. We'll be adding more signage of that. Of course, the ACES program is, is in the building. The parking lot was sealed this week, and it's going to be striped in the coming weeks here. On the 22nd, we are going to host our first meeting in the building, which will be a back-to-school administrative and administrative assistant meeting. And then our goal is the August 10th board meeting will be the first one in that building. So we're hoping. And we think we'll be there. And after that board meeting, we'll be happy to show people around the building and so forth. It's, it's coming along nicely.
Very nice. Well, I stumbled a couple times. Not sure a good place to hide and seek yet. If you're hiding from somebody, you can hide in there. But it's, it's going to be wonderful to have this. And so that would be nice. Okay, thank you, Brandon. Okay, let's move to action items. Mr. Brandy, Additional Courses.
Good evening. I'm here on the second reading of the new math course. We'd like to present for our seniors this year this replacement. Prime math class we approved earlier. If you have any questions, I'll come to answer them. Ready, go, move.
Second.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Brandy.
Mr. Nauman, Lots of Staff Handbooks.
Yeah, at your seat, I gave you a clean copy of our salary schedules. There are a couple mine saying it's one, I have to transpose the number. This is a clean revised copy, so we're asking for your approval for the 21, 22 school year.
Katie, we have a motion to approve the handbook.
No move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries. Katie, you did a good job on that, as you usually do. Somebody hires into the system, no matter what job it is, classified, call our head now, tell them what they're going to make it out of. So we appreciate that. Our employees will. Thank you. Mr. Fosbrake, a couple items here. Fuel bids and transportation.
As I brought to you last month, we need to go out for fuel bids for this year, for this coming year, on the 16th. We sent that out to multiple companies by mail. We also did a tribute banner like we're need to be doing. Once again, we got one fuel bid back, which is Premier Companies, which is the same company we've been using, and the price is exactly the same as we bid, which is basically six cents over crack price. Most of the companies that we've dealt with, we had several call and questioned what was going on. The fact is, we do not have tanks, and we do not store fuel on-site. And most of these companies only will bid if they can deliver to site.
Okay. We have a motion for fuel bids.
No move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, if there's no discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries. Thank you, Tim. Transportation Handbook.
Once again, we have to wait until July 1st when the wonderful government finalizes the law so we know what we need to add to our handbook this year. Fortunately, we added nothing. The only thing we have done is just updated the driver list, made date changes and that kind of stuff. But we added nothing as far as the policies and procedures to the handbook.
It was kind of in-depth handbook here. I mean, there's a lot of things in it, as there should be. And we appreciate all the work you did on it, okay? Do I have a motion to approve? Second, okay? Any discussion on the Transportation Handbook? Okay, if there's no discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, we have the first read.
We got a question. Mr. Jurgens.
How you doing on drivers now? I know you had a shortage a couple years ago.
I was four down until you just hired one tonight. So we're starting the year off with three drivers not available. You willing to come out and say?
How we, will you use subs or something like that?
Yes, we'll be filling it with subs and the mechanics have a shop.
Mr. Nauman, now these are first free items.
Yes. This is for book round for preschool to eighth grade, high school. Obviously, it's based off of the child's schedule. And so we ask you to approve these each year. And I'm excited to say, even with the new adoption for social studies, we were able to get all of our book round from K to 8 at $80, with the exception of first grade is at $90. So you can pretty well guess, it's $80 to be right, except for first grade. If somebody asks you what book round is, but that's exciting, so. Any questions on that? And that's usually unheard of when you have an adoption year to get it to go down immediately.
Because of the essence of letting families know ahead of time what the financial cost will be, can we wait first read? I'd like to suggest we wait first read.
Yeah, I have a motion to wait first read.
No move.
Second. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote on wait first read on textbook, textbook round. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries. Now we need to pass the textbook round.
Like, make a motion to approve?
Okay, we have a motion, second. Any discussion on the textbook round? If there's not, we'll vote. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you for finding ways to trim costs even more. Appreciate it.
That is a big expense for a lot of families, so I think you've done a good job keeping that down here in the community school system. Okay, Mr. Brandy, great point. Indian program.
And Mr. Jurgens, because students and staff arrive before our next board meeting, I would ask that the board consider waiving first read on these items individually as we go through.
Okay.
Thank you. We've called the red one for so long. Change the program to Edunity, it's going to take you a little while. Used to do, I think, all that silver program.
Used to do lingo, but it's still the program to do that. J C L C for seven from Monday to Thursday evenings, where kids can come out and it's part of our grad program. Work on their schooling out with the teacher.
We have teachers, good help. Okay, good program. Okay, we have a motion.
Motion to waive first read.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote to waive the first read under grad point. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same. Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve the grad point program.
We have a motion to approve the grad point. I need a second. Okay, we have a second. Okay, any discussion? Okay, we'll vote on this. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carries.
Wonderful, thank you, Derek.
Thank you, Greg. Mr. Harv. Return to school.
It's something that's been on a lot of people's minds, and at all schools, they return. School starts with teachers on August 3rd and for students on August 5th. And Mr. Reeser and I met with Dr. Bunce last week and reviewed our plans. I'd like to hit the highlights of our proposal. With the exception of AL Tech students, all students will be attending Seymour School in person and full-time. And again, AL Tech students are virtual students by nature. It's the only reason they're excluded there. So there'll be no hybrid schedule or anything under current conditions. Masks will be optional for all students and staff. We will have masks available upon request. One exception of mask will be the nurse's office. When a student shows up sick, the nurse, the nurse will put a mask on them. But other than that, it will be optional. We will practice social distancing when possible. Now, that's probably something, a good habit that will stay after the pandemic is over. Quarantining and contact tracing will be at, when we're directed to do so by healthcare professionals. Athletics will be full go with full spectators. Buildings will be open to visitors with the exception of school lunchrooms right now. We'll continue to evaluate that. And lastly, as we have done throughout the entire pandemic, as community conditions change as guidance and regulations and requirements change, we will, we will make adjustments, but that's, that's where we would like to start in the school year. Once the board approves this, we will get the information out to our staff and the public as soon as possible.
Okay, do we have a motion to waive first read?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to state that I personally like the policy, but unfortunately, this has become so politicized that I don't think we want to give any issue to either side. Or pushing something through without public input, so I would say two reads.
I appreciate that you got input from the county health department and from our hospital leaders and medical personnel. So thank you for reaching out to them and to develop this. I make a motion to approve the COVID protocol?
Okay.
Oh, yeah, we haven't voted on the, yeah, you're right.
Waive the first read. All those in favor, waive the first read.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve return to school protocol. Any discussion? Okay, if there's no discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carries. Okay. Virtualization, Mr. Ron, the server.
Yeah, I've been throwing terms out there for you a little bit anyway, so good evening. Each year, I try to develop a technology budget for Seymour Blue Schools. We have a replacement plan for technology, any kind of what we do, whether it's the servers, the desktops, the document cameras, the projectors, the sound systems, all that stuff. So this is the first time I've come up with this little thing, because it's been eight years since we've replaced our server farm, is what I'll call it. We have one main server that sits at Seymour High School that provides us with our login capabilities, our storage capabilities for all of our staff and students. Even though we use a lot of Google, this is our main system. I had a company that was supposed to be monitoring it every monthly. We were paying a monthly fee and they weren't doing that. So we've now reached the end of life for the current system that we have. So it's a little bit of a risky endeavor that we want to sort of sped up my timeframe a little bit of having to replace this. So what I'm asking, and what I've provided for you in your packets, is three different quotes that I've gotten from three different companies about how to replace, basically so our systems can operate, the computer logins, basically is what it is. So with those three quotes, or three companies that I've dealt with before, the lowest quote, which was quite a bit lower, is a company that we've dealt with on a long-term basis that has done a really good job for us in the past. And so what I'm asking is that, obviously, this is first read. I don't know whether you're going to waive that or not, if you wanted to, or whatever. I can come back, but to be able to get this process through so we can start this replacement plan. It's always been built into our capital projects. Mr. Dolman and I have worked through that for capital projects. To be able to do that, and to be spreading only amongst the buildings as a pursuit to tackle the cost between twelve buildings. So if you have any questions for me, you're very welcome.
Make a motion to waive first read due to the timing of this.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote to waive the first read. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carries. Now, we need a motion to pass the project.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, if there's no discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion passed.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Mr. Dolman, the corporation insurance package.
Yes, I have a renewal for our liability workers' comp umbrella for the upcoming year. Apologize that we didn't give it to you on Friday with the pack to let out, but we were sure to have to do workouts of details. And although there are two options listed there, there's really only one option, because actually the lower quote by just a small amount doesn't include insurance for our school farm. And so from our standpoint, that's not an option to have that wonderful program out there and not be able to insure it. So we tried everything that we possibly could, even looking at buying a separate farm policy, but because of the size of the corporation, nobody really wanted to deal with it. And from what we understand, the other company that we were looking at doesn't even have the ability to write that in Indiana at this time. So it's our recommendation that we would renew with Liberty Mutual like we've done in the past. We will continue to investigate, but because our program is kind of a one-of-a-kind, that's a drawback. Which, I don't know what else to say, but we can't have a program that we can't insure. And it's such a good opportunity for our students to be able to deal with detractors and things. And that's really where the liability comes from, that they're operating big equipment, that basically nobody else does right now. So we're kind of the leader back, I guess. That would be our recommendation to renew with the renewed. Again, I apologize for taking so long. We tried everything we could. We actually started back at the end of May, trying to figure out what options we had. Because our policy actually renews in August. We waited as long as we could.
Again, due to timing, I propose that we waive first read.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion?
Well, Steve, what happened to the workers' comp? That's where all the.
Well, there's two driving factors with workers' comp. One being that our payrolls continue to grow. And the second thing is that our experience mod, you can see, was 1.05, and now it's 1.17. We have had numerous slips and falls and things, which works against us, unfortunately. And just in the last five years, we, we were at a great experience mod, almost unheard of in the state, to now we're below average. So are we, we've just had some unusual accidents with our employees. It's the best way to put it. I don't want to say they're accidents, but that's the risk you have with workers' comp. If somebody gets hurt and they, it's, you know, it's reported against us. I don't want to encourage people not to turn in workers' comp, because that's even worse. Don't stop losing that.
Safety, safety, safety.
Just be safe. But most of them are slips and falls, which is the number one thing in most cases. And we continue to work on trying to get people to be careful.
Okay, no more discussion. We'll vote to waive the first read. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carries. Now, we need a motion for the corporation insurance package.
Motion.
Motion, a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this?
Quickly, Steve, are we up to par with our cybersecurity insurance?
Yeah, and they're actually looking at that to make sure that everything is covered, because that's a big issue right now. And so we're actually looking at that to make sure that we have adequate coverage and that, for instance, would it cover any of our equipment? Because I know some places have had to replace printers and things because of them being hacked. And so we're just checking to make sure what all we have coverage for, because that's a, that's a big issue right now. And it's devastating to be shut down for weeks.
I don't think there's any way you can totally get around with possibly the ransomware or whatever, but we're doing everything we can to make sure that doesn't happen.
And like I said, we, in this prior renewal, they're looking at exactly what, what does that entail? What does it cover, you know, in great detail? Because like I said, it's, it's devastating, because in some instances, when you get hacked, your entire corporation is shut down. You have no access to your network at all for weeks. And so just think about not even being able to access your student database. You can't access anything. So we're looking at all that. Backups are so important.
Okay, I think we need to vote to waive the first read. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carries. Now, we need to vote for the corporation insurance package. What motion?
Renewed, that's what we just voted on.
Okay, we did that, okay. Okay, the budget, Mr. Naan.
Yeah, we can actually got our.
We voted on the, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Naan.
Still need a vote to approve.
We still need to vote to approve it. Okay. At this time, we'll vote. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carries the corporation insurance package. Thank you, Mr. Naan. Now, we're looking at the budget here for a second.
Yeah, actually, at our next meeting, we will actually present our budget to you. Be the same timeline as we've had in the past. The funding formula is out now, so the wild card is what is our enrollment? Because it's no secret that the dollars follow the child now. So if our enrollment is at fifty-two hundred, I'll be happy. If it's below, I won't be as happy. But the funding formula is, is good to growing school corporations. That's the best way I can put it. It really treats you good if you're, if you're growing. And probably for the first time that I've seen in a long time, the general assembly did better, you know, did better for the formula. So we will be presenting that at the next meeting. Really not any major changes. Our debt service is stable. So the wild card will be, did our assessment go up in accounting? Because if the assessment goes up, your property taxes go down, which would be to our benefit as we are selling bonds for the new building renovations. That would help us tremendously. As in the past too, the general assembly passes a growth factor for the operation fund, which is 4.5%. That's not 4.5 cents. That's 4.5%. So our 300 fund levy will grow by that amount. So I can't say that property taxes will go up, because if everything stayed the same, they will grow by that amount. And it's not to a school corporation's advantage to ever not grow your operation levy by that amount. Because if you didn't, you'd have to make up the growth out of your general fund or education fund. That's just a given, but that's nice to be able to get 4.5%. That's set by the state.
Steve, what was our enrollment last year? Total enrollment, you know that?
We were at fifty-one and something. I don't remember the exact enrollment. And that's why we projected to be fifty-two, is what.
So we were over fifty-one. We were over fifty-one.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you. We'll kick you out the budget in August meeting.
Yeah, I'll have a notebook. It won't be so great. Sorry.
Important events, at the fair, you can go down there, visit with people. First Teacher Day is August 3rd. We'll have breakfast at Betty's Townhouse. Any of the board members who want to be there, it'd be appreciated. School will start the fifth with the students, and then our meeting will be August 10th. Is there any other questions or comments before we adjourn? Okay, if there's any questions or comments, like a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
We'll vote. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carries.